San. Terny mulay. Yan na man, the showdown. Ah, busy san man. Uy, boss. Gusta na? Yeah, regards to family. Okay na. Fine. Boss. Gusta, boss? Ano ba talaga yan? It works. Pero tumutunog ba tumutu... I mean. Hindi nagpa-boss. Pero pinupurify niya ngayon. At saka ang effect daw niyan, boss. Ang effect daw niyan, nagiging habulin ka na ngang babae. Eh, ang dami nitatanong dito tungkol sa'yo. Tinatanong nila kung sang... Ay, hindi. Hindi, palagay ko hindi, ayun nay sir yan eh. Girl... Girlie nay sir. Pero mo, no? Oo, nagin... Eh, ang dami nitatanong eh. Ah, 'yan? Sige, kukuha ako niyan. Oo, sige, sige. Meron bang ano nga 'yun? Wala namang magpipilibre speech ngayon? Wala na? Shalang. Oh! Taposin na natin. Ni... Game.
Ay, sir. Naglala. Eh, ah, eh, agi man.
That's not true. That's for you now.
Session is hereby resumed. The majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, I move for an additional reference of business. So move, Mister Speaker.
Is there any objection? The chair here stands. Motion is approved. The secretary general is hereby, uh... Requested to please read the additional reference of business. Please proceed.
Additional reference of business. Bills on first reading. House Bill 7659. Granting cash incentives to the top three graduating students of public schools in the country. Representative Olivares.
To the committee on basic education and culture.
House Bill 7660. Declaring San Jose Batangas as the egg basket of the Philippines. Representative Bolilla.
To the committee on agriculture and food.
House Bill 7661. Mandating the TESDA to update the existing training for work scholarship program, special training for employment program, and technical vocation, education, and training. Representative De La Santos.
To the committee on higher and technical education.
House Bill 7662. Promoting rural financial inclusion and literacy. Representative De La Santos.
To the committee on rural development.
House Bill 7663. Creating national student loan program. Representative De La Santos.
To the committee on higher and technical education.
House Bill 7664. Providing internet access for agribusiness sector. Representative De La Santos.
To the committee on agriculture and food.
House Bill 7665. Introducing a rent relief plan to asset residential tenants adversity impacted by the 2020 economic crisis. Representative Salceda.
To defeat... To defeat COVID-19 ad hoc committee.
House Bill 7666. Providing for paramedics to be stationed at each police station and fire station in the Philippines. Representative De La Santos.
To the committee on public order and safety.
House Bill 7667. Proposing certain amendments to the government assistance to students and teachers in private education act. Representative Bromolo.
To the committee on basic education and culture.
House Bill 7668. Amending Articles 183 and 184 of the revised penal code. Representative Veloso.
To the committee on justice.
House Resolutions. House Resolution 1210. Urging the Dole to probe the reported abuse, maltreatment of employees by Red Steel Corporation in San Simon Pampanga. Representative Taduran.
To the committee on rules.
House Resolution 1211. Directing the appropriate committees to inquire into the implementation of the Philippine Tropical Fabrics Law. Representative Legarda de Venesia, Benitez, Singson Mian, Escudero, Arenas, Santos Recto, Savillano, Yap Victor Aragonés, Rivilla, Hofer, Vergara, Torres Gómez, Gatchalyan, Roman, Garin, Sharon, Rodriguez, Alonte, Makapagal, Arroyo, Bolilla, Villar, Kimbo, García, José Enrique, Maceda, Nieto, Vargas, Nogriles Jerico, and Belmonte.
To the committee on rules.
Communications. Emails from several municipal mayors and provincial governors informing the House of the reports of fund utilization and status of program, project activity implementation relative to biennial grant to cities, municipalities, and provinces for certain months of 2020.
To the committee on appropriations.
Committee report. Report number 494 of the Committee on Welfare of Children on House Bill Number 7679.
To the committee on rules. The majority floor leader. Session suspended.
Hindi, pero... Mag... Ano tayo yan? Third reading, ha? It's all... No problem. Di ba? Okay na ba tayo? Wala. Ah, meron na man. Second thing. Part two, the expulsion. That's a... What you want to be, uh, what about? Seven hundred. expulsion change. Eh, at least one pass. Come in the expulsion, come through. Gonna assume, assume. Yes. Majesty and... I have a... And that is a forty mark, sir. Joey. 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 You see? Ta ta na. Siya na, siya na. Madyo. Madyo. Ready ka na? Maybe... Boss. Gusto mo third reading muna tayo? Kulang pa yun? Ah. Why do na?
Yeah, first, first reading question.
Second reading. Sponsorship lang. Who? Awat mo ng interplayisyon ko sa... Pa... Ahan na ang gusto. Sponsorship lang. Sponsorship lang? Oo. Sponsorship speech lang naman, di ba? Uy, sabihan na yung ano... Tomit...
Session resumed. The majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, I move to begin consideration of House Bill 7425 as contained in committee report number 426. Could the secretary general be directed to read the title of said measure? So move, Mister Speaker.
Is there any objection? The chair here stands. Secretary General, please proceed.
House Bill Number 7425. An Act imposing value-added tax on digital transactions in the Philippines amending for the purpose Sections 105, 108, 109, 110, 113, 114, and 236, and adding a new section, 105-A of the National Internal Revenue Code of 1997 as amended.
The majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we recognize for his sponsorship speech our esteemed chairman of the Committee on Ways and Means from the second district of Albay. I move for the recognition of the honorable Joey Sartes Alceda. So move, Mister Speaker.
The honorable chairman of the Committee on Ways and Means is hereby recognized. Please proceed.
Good afternoon. Thank you very much, Honorable Speaker, members of the House of Representatives, both here and in Zoom. Committee Report 426 on House Bill 7425 aims to fuel our government by doing the right thing for four reasons. First, the implementation of VAT to digital transaction does not aim to impoverish small online sellers. There are enough safety nets in the tax code and other laws. First, those exempt... Those who are earning below 3 million or selling below 3 million are exempt from paying VAT. Those who actually have assets, who are assets below 3 million are also exempt. Those who import below 10,000 are considered de minimis and therefore not subject to VAT. And those that are earning 250,000 per year are also... We are after big businesses who are unfairly raking it in. Facebook and Google make 57 billion in this country and pay not a single cent of tax. Second, the measure seeks to level the playing field between the traditional and digital businesses and maintain the integrity of the tax system by clarifying the imposition of VAT on digital service providers. While the said role of information and communication technology in nation building has been recognized as early as 2000 with the passage of the Electronic Commerce Act. That was my first tip... My first term in Congress. The tax on online transaction must have the force of law for it to be optimized. Third, the legislation of composition of tax on digitalized economy is a global practice. Thus far, 77 countries have enacted legislation on indirect taxes with 10... With 10 more in the process of formulating their own. With approval of this measure, we are joining the ranks of nations who choose to share the benefits of the flourishing digital economy for the greater public. We are proud to note that the KPMG reports that this measure is aligned with the guidelines set by the OECD in digital taxation. Fourth, the government will lose out if it fails to top this new source. The measure will resort in an estimated revenue of 31 billion the first year of implementation, 62% of which will come from foreign digital service provider. It is only fair that those who make money from Filipino consumer should carry some burden of government. Mister... Mister Speaker, your honor, our internet economy is growing at more than 20 to 30%. Estimated at $7 billion in 2019, the internet economy or digital economy makes up 2.1% of the country's GDP and is expected to hit 5.3% of GDP by 2025. This will only keep on growing and the economy will become increasingly more digital. Just like the 77 countries, let us set the ground rules clearly and this early so that we will not have to make more painful and difficult choices in the future. Mister Speaker, on the average, Filipinos spend 10 hours a day in internet with 73 million users in the country. Social networking and online shopping and gaming spending 93 billion in 2019. We have a huge taxing opportunity before us. This means measure, however, as this has been tempered in order to conform with the current practices across the world, although originally it was meant to secure 31 billion, this measure actually is more... Is more reasonable by seek... By merely focusing on VAT rather than including income tax or the domicile or forcing the domicile of the global digital companies. So, Mister Speaker, that 10 billion may look small now, but with this growth of 30%, it will certainly be a very big component of the entire economy as well as of our revenue mix. The Committee on Ways and Means was tasked to find funds as per direct instruction of our speaker during the opening of the first of the appropriation cycle in order to find new stimulus packets beyond Biennihan II. We offer this VAT as the first installment. This VAT on online transaction as part of the solution to our country's efforts to recover more quickly, more meaningfully, and more broadly from the adverse impact of COVID-19. Thank you, Mister Speaker, your honor. I humbly seek the immediate approval of this measure. Thank you very much, your honors.
Thank you, distinguished chairman of the Committee on Ways and Means. The majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, our parliamentary status regarding House Bill 7425 is that we are in the period of sponsorship and debate. I move to suspend consideration of House Bill 7425.
Is there any objection? The chair here stands. Motion is hereby approved. The majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, I move to recognize our esteemed deputy speaker, the honorable brother Eddie Villanueva, who rises to make a manifestation. So move, Mister Speaker.
The distinguished deputy speaker is hereby recognized. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. And I would like to thank my, uh... Uh, respected colleagues in this house body for giving me this opportunity to manifest my explanation of my vote on House Bill 7575 on establishing the Bulacan Airport City Special Economic Zone and Freeport, province of Bulacan, and appropriating funds therefore. For the general information of everybody, your study is... Was scheduled to interpolate during the time of interpolation of the second reading of this bill. But, uh, the good... Uh, the goodness of the chairman of the economic affairs prevailed for me not to interpolate anymore. Just submit our amendments for the improvement. However, unfortunately, probably through some technical problems, the amendments were not properly adopted. Hence, I was prepared yesterday to give my explanation on my vote. However, I suddenly saw on the computer screen that my name was removed by the host, probably because of technicality. And I would like to thank the majority leader, Honorable Martin Maltese, for giving me a chance to manifest my explanation. So, thank you, Mister Speaker. I am really disappointed yesterday, actually, that I was unable to connect, log in, and join the session via Zoom and participate in the voting on third reading of House Bill 7575. The bill is very close to my heart as it will greatly affect my beloved province of Bulacan and my inability to make my voice heard on the measure due to technical difficulties and troubles. It's really burdening me. That's why I thank the party for giving me the chance to deliver this manifestation. And I would like this to be inserted as my explanation of my vote on House Bill 7575. Mister Speaker, distinguished colleagues, this representation is a loyal son of the great province of Bulacan who will seek and support any effort that will protect and promote the best interests of Bulacanio people. House Bill 7575 is a sample of a policy that hopefully could serve the best interests of the country and that of the province Bulacan. It seeks the establishment of a Bulacan Ecozone and of a body corporate Bulacan Airport City Special Economic Zone and Freeport Authority to boost and stimulate the economic development of Bulacan and nearby areas as well as provide more job opportunities for the people of the province. However, Mister Speaker, our goal of development in its holistic sense must not only be measured in terms of its promised jobs, economic growth, and even increased revenues. Efforts in pursuit of genuine development must also be cognizance of the possible ramifications of certain legislative measure or policy on the social, moral, and even cultural health of the country or locality. We aspire that House Bill 775 will bring holistic and genuine development for the country and for the province of Bulacan, but it will not. Mister Speaker, we introduce amendments to House Bill 775 which seek to explicitly prohibit the conduct and operation of any form and and kind of gambling or businesses that will promote buys or any act contrary to morals, to morals such as but not limited to casino gaming, games... to casino gaming, games of chance, games of cards, games of numbers, horse trading, horse racing, dog racing, cabaret, and day and night clubs within the Bulacan Ecozone. Unfortunately, our proposed amendments which mirror our aspiration for a kind of economic development devoid of any immorality and apostasy were never reflected in the said bill. In effect, the third reading copy of the bill is silent on whether it will allow gambling or not. Thus, we review the bill as one-sided in its quest for development. Yes, it might open the country to factors that will improve these statistics and figures of our economy, but it will also open our country, especially my Bulacan community, to the damaging effects and morals, ills, moral ills brought about by gambling like reduced familial stability, indebtedness, money laundering, prostitution, proliferation of drugs, and crimes, to name a few. Mister Speaker, let me just put this on record. The opposition to the establishment of gambling businesses in our country is already so pronounced. The President of the Republic has always expressed in his opposition to gambling in many of his public speeches and addresses. Even the proponent and tight specieant of the airport to be constructed in Bulacan once said that when you put up a casino in a locality, seventy-five percent of the clients will be domestic and you will be killing a lot of domestic businesses and will be contributing to the breakups of marriages and families. Also, an empirical study by the University of Chicago National Opinion Research Center in the United States says that the availability of a casino within fifty miles roughly doubles the prevalence of problem and pathological gamblers. The dangers of welcoming and allowing the influx of gambling firms in our country cannot be overemphasized. The same facts and truth were conveyed by Darren Asremuglo and James Robinson, the authors of this New York Times and Wall Street Journal bestseller book entitled Why Nations Fail: The Origins of Power, Prosperity, and Poverty. Finally, and most importantly, Mister Speaker and distinguished colleagues, gambling is against God's commands and principles. It will bring many grips to a person's life and brings heaven's curses into a nation. The Bible says in First Timothy, Chapter six, verses nine to ten, and I quote, "Those who want to get rich fall, those, those who want to get rich fall into temptation and trap and into many foolish and harmful desires that plants, plants people into ruin and destruction. For the love of money is the root of all kinds of evil. Some people eager for money have wandered from the faith and pierced themselves with many grips." This refers to get rich quick formula. This country is already fraught with so many grips and miseries and I had hoped that this August chamber would not have contributed to it. Even the Ten Commandments of our God, especially the Ten, the Ten Commandment gave to mankind by the Lord, it says and I quote, "Obet not your neighbor's possessions and wives," unquote. Mister Speaker, the nineteen-eighty-seven Constitution says that we implore, again I say it, we implore the aid of Almighty God in our quest for a just and humane society. This means that even our Supreme Court recognized that we earnestly beg and seek God's providence to bless our pursuits to get the good life for our countrymen. But I just cannot understand it, Mister Speaker and distinguished colleagues, that we passed measures that are in complete disregard of His percepts and in defiance of His commands, yet we are hoping, we are praying, and we are expecting that He will grant our prayers and bless this country. Isn't it that contrary, contrary, and unfair to God, who is the ultimate source of all good things? That is why the abolition of religious groups in the Province of Bulacan, including the Roman Catholic Church and the various religious groups, even in the whole country, including the elders of the nations, from various denominations, are ready anytime to oppose this bill, even through public assembly. Mister Speaker, yes, I am in full support of this legislative measure that will aim development for my precious Province of Bulacan. But sadly, by not having a provision that will expressly prohibit gambling, especially casino's industry, casino industry in the Bulacan Ecozone, the bill carries with it a poison that would kill the values, moral sensitivities, and families, and even the domestic businesses in my beloved Province of Bulacan. As long as we are here, Mister President, Mister Speaker, we cannot allow our beloved Province of Bulacan to be the modern Las Vegas and modern Macau in this part of the world. On this note, I casted my no vote to House Bill seven-five-seven-five. Thank you, Mister Speaker and distinguished colleagues. God bless us all. God bless the House of Representatives, even the Senate, and even the Office of the President. Thank you and God bless the Philippines.
Thank you and God bless the distinguished gentleman and Deputy Speaker from Bulacan. The Majority Floor Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we enter into the records the explanation of the vote of our esteemed Deputy Speaker, Brother Eddie Villanueva. So move, Mister Speaker.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. Motion is hereby approved. The Secretary General, please take note. The Majority Floor Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bills declaring tourist spots or ecotourism zones, House Bill seven-five-two-eight, seven-five-two-nine, seven-five-three-zero, seven-five-three-three, seven-five-three-four, and seven-five-three-five. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the role of nominal voting.
Is there any objection to the motion? There being none. Motion is hereby approved. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the titles of the bills alluded to by the Majority Floor Leader. Please proceed.
House Bill seven-five-two-eight, an act declaring the four-shore areas that line the Albay West Coast in the third district of the Province of Albay as tourist spots and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill seven-five-two-nine, an act declaring the municipality of Hellenar, Province of Albay, an ecotourism board, a zone, and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill seven-five-three-zero, an act declaring the city of Iligan a tourist development area and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill seven-five-three-three, an act declaring Barangay Lagit Padilla in the municipality of Bugalon, Province of Pangasinan, an ecotourism zone and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill seven-five-three-four, an act declaring Limahong Channel located in the municipality of Lingayan, Province of Pangasinan, a tourist spot and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill seven-five-three-five, an act declaring Mudlum Cave in the municipality of Quezon, Province of Palawan, a tourist destination, providing for its development and appropriating funds therefore. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill seven-five-two-eight, seven-five-two-nine, seven-five-three-zero, seven-five-three-three, seven-five-three-four, and seven-five-three-five. Honorable members, Abante, Abaya, Abelianosa, Abu, Abwegsaldivar, Abunda, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adjong, Advinkula, Agabas, Agarao, Aglipay, Aginaldo, Albano, Almario, Alonte, Alvarez, Franz, Alvarez Senaro, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante Matba, Amatong, Angara, Aragones, Arbison, Arenas, Arroyo, Atsienza, Umentado, Babasa, Bagatsing, Balindong, Banyas Nograles, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Bersaga, Baskug, Bautista, Bautista Bandigan, Belmonte, Benitez, Bernos, Biason, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo, Brosas, Bulut, Bustos, Kabatbat, Kabotchan, Cabredo, Cagas, Calderon, Calixto, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kawagdan, Kari, Castelo, Castro, Franz, Castro, Fredinil, Cayetano Alan Peter Compañero, Cayetano Maria La Arne, Celeste, Chato, Chipeco, Tsungalaw, Coangelica, Coelizaldi, Kuanko, Quagliantes, Crusologo, Kuwa, Quaresma, Cueva, Quelyamat, Dagook, Dalipe, Dalog, Dasa, De Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor Lawrence, Defensor Michael, Delmar, De Los Santos, De Los Montalia, Demaporo Abdullah, Demaporo Muhammad Khalid, Duavit, Duhali, Duterte, Difostino, Ina, Difostino Michael III, D Ian Paul, Ebkas, Ecleyo, Elago, Inverga, Erise, Erigel, Ermita Buahin, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Fariñas Ria, Fariñas Rudis Caesar, Fernandez, Fernando, Ferrer, Juliette, Ferr Luis, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Frasco, Fuente Belia, Gaite, Garbin, Garcia, Jose Enrique, Garcia Pablo, John, Garin, Garcia, Garcia Vincent, Garin, Janet, Garin Charon, Gassetaya, Gatchalian, Gato, Heron, Goed, Go Mark, Gonzaga, Gonzalez, Aurelio Dong, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Sandro, Guriseta, Giko, Gulyas, Guya, Jaresco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera Di, Hofer, Haluso, Javier Jimenez, Coelisa, Co Wilton, Konghun, Labad Labad, Laxon, Laxon Noel, Lagman, Lagon, Lara, Lasatín, Leatson, Legarda, Lim, Lim, Kaychong, Lopez, Loyola, Losotan, Makapagal, Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Mangawang, Magundadato, Marcoleta, Mariano Hernandez, Marinho, Marquez, Martinez, Matba, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Momo, Natibidad, Naganyo, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles, Jerko, Nograles, Juan Fidel, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyon, Uwaminal, Olivares, Ong Jose, Ong Roni, Ortega, Owan Adison, Pacquiao Alberto, Pacquiao Rogelio, Padiernos, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panotes, Peña, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Puno, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramiresato, Rimulia, Rivillar, Reyes, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez, Roman Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand, Romualdes Yeda, Marie, Romualdo, Romulo, Roques, Akdalan, Sa Garbaria, Sa Kaluran, Salceda, Salimbangan, Salo Sanchez, Sangkapan, Santos Recto, Sarmento, Saulug, Savillano, Xiao Silverio, Singson, Singson Mihan, Sinzuat, Swan Sing Estradita, Swan Sing Horacio, Suárez Aleta, Suárez David, Sun Tay Si Alvarado, Taduran, Talliado, Tambunting, Tan Alisa, Tan Angelina, Tan Shamir, Tan Sharni, Tan Shurni, Tejada, Tevez Arnulfo, Tevez Ose, Tiyango, Tolentina, Torres Gomez, Tulfo, Tupascutor, Ti Alan, Ti Diego, Umalie Alfonso, Umalie Maria Victoria, Unabia, Ungab, Ui Juliette, Ui Rolando, Valeriano, Val Mayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso, Vergara, Villa, Villa Fuerte, Villanueva Eduardo, Villanueva Noel, Villar, Villara, Suárez, Villarica, Violago, Yap, Eric Yap Victor, Yu Zamora, Ronaldo Zamora, Waykurat, Zarate Zubiri. Second call for the said House Bills. Abante, Abaya, Abelianosa, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Agarao, Alvarez Senaro, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amatong, Umentado, Baronda, Bersaga, Biason, Biliones, Biron, Brosas, Bulut, Kabatbat, Caminero, Castro, Franz, Castro, Fredinil, Coangelica, Kuanko, Kuwa, Quelyamat, Dalipe, Duavit, Difostino Ina, Difostino Michael III, Ebkas, Erise, Espina, Espino, Fernando, Fortun, Garbin, Garin, Janet, Garin Charon, Gatchalian, Heron, Goed, Go Mark, Ah Goed, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Sandro, Gulyas, Herrera Di, Haluso, Javier, Konghun, Laxon, Ah, Lagon, Leatson, Lopez, Magundadato, Marcoleta, Mariano Hernandez, Marinho, Mendoza, Mercado, Nava, Nograles Jerko, Nograles Juan Fidel, Núñez Malanyon, Uwaminal, Ong Jose, Pancho, Panotes, Pichai, Kimbo, Rimulia, Rivillar, Rivera, Romero, Romulo, Sa, Sa Garbaria, Xiao Silverio, Singson, Suárez Aleta, Suárez David, Talliado, Tan Alisa, Tan Angelina, Tan Shamir, Tan Shurni, Tejada, Tevez Arnulfo, Tevez Ose, Torres Gomez, Ti Alan, Ti Diego, Umalie Alfonso, Ui Juliette, Vergara, Villa, Villa Fuerte, Villanueva Brother Eddie, Villar, Villara,
With affirmative votes, zero negative and zero abstention, House Bills number seventy-five-two-eight, seventy-five-two-nine, seventy-five-three-zero, seventy-five-three-three, seventy-five-three-four, and seventy-five-three-five are hereby approved on third and final reading. The Majority Floor Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bills for state colleges and universities, House Bill seven-five-three-seven, seven-five-six-five, seven-five-six-six. And for this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bills and thereafter to call the role for nominal voting.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. Motion is approved. The Secretary General is hereby requested to please proceed with the, uh, no, you first, they, you have first to read the titles, the titles of the three bills concerned. Please proceed.
House Bill number seven-five-three-seven, an act establishing campuses of the Davao del Norte State College, DNSC, in the municipalities of Carmen and Santo Tomas, and in the Island Garden City of Samal, Province of Davao del Norte, to be known respectively as the DNSC Carmen Campus, DNSC Santo Tomas Campus, and DNSC Island Garden City of Samal Campus and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill number seven-five-six-five, an act establishing a campus of the Compostela Valley State College in the municipality of Nabunturan, Province of Davao de Oro, to be known as the Compostela Valley State College Nabunturan Campus and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill number seven-five-six-six, an act converting the Occidental Mindoro State College in the municipality of San Jose, Province of Occidental Mindoro, into a state university to be known as the Occidental Mindoro State University and appropriating funds therefore. Roll call of members for consideration on third reading, House Bill numbers for seven-five-three-seven, seven-five-six-five, and seven-five-six-six. Abante, Abaya, Abelianosa, Abu, Abwegsaldivar, Abunda, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adjong, Advinkula, Agabas, Agarao, Aglipay, Aginaldo, Albano, Almario, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Senaro, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante Matba, Amatong, Angara, Aragones, Arbison, Arenas, Arroyo, Atsienza, Umentado, Babasa, Bagatsing, Balindong, Banyas Nograles, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Bersaga, Baskug, Bautista, Bautista Bandigan, Belmonte, Benitez, Bernos, Biason, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo, Brosas, Bulut, Bustos, Kabatbat, Kabotchan, Cabredo, Cagas, Calderon, Calixto, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kawagdan, Kari, Castelo, Castro, Franz, Castro, Fredinil, Cayetano Alan Peter Compañero, Cayetano Maria La Arne, Celeste, Chato, Chipeco, Tsungalaw, Coangelica, Coelizaldi, Kuanko, Quagliantes, Crusologo, Kuwa, Quaresma, Cueva, Quelyamat, Dagook, Dalipe, Dalog, Dasa, De Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor Lawrence, Defensor Michael, Delmar, De Los Santos, De Los Montalia, Demaporo Abdullah, Demaporo Khalid, Duavit, Duhali, Duterte, Difostino Ina, Difostino Michael, D Ian, Ebkas, Ecleyo, Elago, Inverga, Erise, Erigel, Ermita Buahin, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Fariñas Ria, Fariñas Rudis Caesar, Fernandez, Fernando, Ferrer Juliette, Ferr Luis, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Frasco, Fuente Belia, Gaite, Garbin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Garin Janet, Garin Charon, Gassetaya, Gatchalian, Gato, Heron, Goed, Go Mark, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio Dong, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Sandro, Guriseta, Giko, Gulyas, Guya, Jaresco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera Di, Hofer, Halusos, Javier, Jimenez, Coelisa, Co Wilton, Konghun, Labad Labad, Laxon, Laxon Noel, Lagman, Lagon, Lara, Lasatín, Leatson, Legarda, Lim, Lim Kaychong, Lopez, Loyola, Losotan, Makapagal, Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Mangawang, Magundadato, Marcoleta, Mariano Hernandez, Marinho, Marquez, Martinez, Matba, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Momo, Natibidad, Naganyo, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles Jerico, Nograles Juan Fidel, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyon, Uwaminal, Olivares, Ong Jose, Ong Roni, Ortega, Uwaminal, Ong Jose, Ong Roni, Ortega, Uwaminal, Ong Jose, Ong Roni, Ortega, Ortega, Uwanyo Dison, Pakia Alberto, Pakia Rogelio, Padjernos, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panotes, Peña, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Puno, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramiresato, Rimulia, Revilia, Reyes, Rivera, Robes Rodriguez, Roman, Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand, Romualdes Yedda Marie, Romaldo, Romulo, Roque, Sackdalan, Sagarbaria, Sakaluran, Salceda, Salimbangan, Salo Sanchez, Sangkapan, Santos Recto, Sarmiento, Saulug, Savillano, Xiao Silverio, Singson, Singson Mihan, Sin Suat, Swansing Estrelita, Swansing Horacio, Suarez Aleta, Suarez David. Sun Tay Si Alvarado, Taduran, Talliado, Tambunting, Tan Alisa, Tan Angelina, Tan Shamir, Tan Shari, Tan Shurni, Tejada, Tevez Arnulfo, Tevez Jose, Tiyango, Tolentino, Torres Gomez, Tulfo, Tupas, Chuto, Ti Alan, Ti Diego, Ummali Alfonso, Ummali Maria Victoria, Unabia, Ungab, Ui Juliette, Ui Rolando, Valeriano, Val Mayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso, Vergara, Villa, Villa Fuerte, Villanueva Eduardo, Villanueva Noel, Villar, Villarasa Suarez, Villarica, Violago, Yap Eric, Yap Victor, you, Zamora Ronaldo, Zamora Waykurat, Zarate, and Zubiri. Second call of members for consideration of third reading of House Bill number seven-five-three-seven, seven-five-six-five, and seven-five-six-six. Abaya, Abelianosa, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Agarau, Alvarez Senaro, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amatong, Omentado, Baronda, Bersaga, Biason, Biron, Brosas, Bulut, Kabatbat, Kamineru, Castro Franz, Castro Fredinil, Co Angelica, Co Wanko, Kuwa, Kulyamat, Dalipe, Duavit, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael, Ebkas. Erise, Espina, Espino, Fernando, Fortun, Garbin, Garin Janet, Garin Charon, Gatchalian, Heron, Goed, Gomar, Gonzaga, Gonzales Sandro, Gulyas, Herrera Dee, Halusso, Javier, Kong Hun. Lagon, Lia Tion, Lopez, Magundadato, Marcoleta, Mariano Hernandez, Marinho, Mendoza, Mercado, Nava, Nograles Jerko, Nograles Juan Fidel, Núñez Malanyaon, Uwaminal, Ong Jose, Pancho, Panotes, Pichai, Rimulia, Revilia, Romero, Romulo, Sagarbaria, Xiao Silverio, Singson, Suarez Aleta, Suarez David, Talliado, Tan Alisa, Tan Angelina, Tan Shamir, Tan Shari, Tan Shurni, Tejada, Tevez Arnulfo, Tevez Jose, Torres Gomez, Ti Alan, Ti Diego, Ummali Alfonso, Ui Juliette, Vergara, Villa, Villa Fuerte, Villar, Villarasa Suarez, Villarica, and you.
With two hundred six affirmative votes, zero negative and zero abstention. House Bills number seventy-five-thirty-seven, seventy-five-sixty-five, and seventy-five-sixty-six is hereby approved on third and final reading. The majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House bills regarding the establishment of marine hatcheries. House Bill seven-five-three-nine, seven-five-four-one, seven-five-four-three, seven-five-four-four, seven-five-four-five, seven-five-four-seven, seven-five-five-six. And for this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is hereby approved. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the titles of the bills concerned and proceed with the nominal voting.
House Bill seven-five-three-nine, an act establishing a central multi-species marine hatchery in the municipality of Barotac Viejo, Province of Iloilo, and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill number seven-five-four-one, an act establishing a satellite multi-species marine hatchery in the municipality of San Fernando, Province of Camarinesur, and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill number seven-five-four-three, an act establishing a satellite multi-species hatchery in the municipality of Pasacau, Province of Camarinesur, and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill number seven-five-four-four, an act establishing a central multi-species marine hatchery in the city environmental estate of Barangay Santa Lucia, city of Puerta Princesa, Province of Palawan, and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill seven-five-four-five, an act establishing a central multi-species marine hatchery in the municipality of Villaba, and a satellite multi-species marine hatchery in the municipalities of Calubian and Late, Province of Late, and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill seven-five-four-seven, an act establishing a satellite multi-species marine hatchery in the municipality of Batad, Province of Iloilo, and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill seven-five-five-six, an act establishing a central multi-species marine hatchery in the municipality of Manilaback, Province of Camarinesur, and appropriating funds therefore. Roll call of members in consideration of the above-mentioned House bills. Honorable Representatives, Abante, Abaya, Abelianosa, Abu, Abueg Saldivar, Abunda, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adjong, Advinkula, Agabas, Agarau, Aglipay, Aginaldo, Albano, Almario, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Senaro, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amanty Matba, Amatong, Angara, Aragones, Arbison, Arenas, Arroyo, Atsensa, Omentado, Babassa, Bagatsing, Balindong, Banias Nograles, Barba, Barber's, Baronda, Bersaga, Bascub, Bautista, Bautista Bandigan, Belmonte, Benitez, Bernos, Biason, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo, Brosas, Bulut, Bustos, Kabatbat, Kabuchan, Cabredo, Cagas, Calderon, Calixto, Kamineru, Campos, Kanama, Kawagdan, Kari, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fredinil, Caytano Alan Peter Campañero, Caytano Maria La Arni, Celeste, Chato, Chipeco, Tsungalau, Co Angelica, Co Elizaldi, Co Wanko, Kulyantes, Crisologo, Kuwa, Kuareisma, Cueva, Kulyamat, Dago, Dalipe, Dalog, Dasa, Deusus, De Venesia, Defensor Lawrence, Defensor Michael, Delmar, De Los Santos, De Losa Montalia, Dimaporo Abdullah, Dimaporo, Mohamed Khalid, Duavit, Duhalii, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael III, Di Ian Paul, Ebkas, Ecleyo, Elago, Inverga, Erise, Erigel, Ermita Buahin, Escodero, Espina, Espino, Estrelia. Fariñas Ria, Fariñas Rudy Cesar. Fernandez Fernando Ferrer, Juliette Ferr Luis, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Frasco Fuentebelia, Gaite, Garbin, Garcia Jose Enrique Garcia Pablo Djan, Garcia Vincent, Garin Janet, Garin Charon, Gassetaya, Gatchalian, Gato, Heron, Goed, Gomar, Gonzaga, Gonzales Aurelio Dong, Gonzales Neptali, Gonzales Sandro. Guriseta, Gico, Gulyas, Guya, Jaresco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera Dee, Hofer, Halusso, Javier Jimenez, Co Elisa, Co Wilton, Kong Hun. Labad Labad, Laxson, Laxson Noel, Lagman, Lagon, Lara Les, Lazatin, Lia Tion, Legarda, Lim, Lim Kai Tiong, Lopez, Loyola, Losotan, Makapagal, Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Mangawang, Magundadato. Marcoleta, Mariano Hernandez, Marinho, Marquez, Martinez, Matba, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Momo, Natibidad, Naganyo. Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles Jerko, Nograles Juan Fidel, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyaon, Uwaminal, Olivares, Ong Jose, Ong Ronnie, Ortega, Uwana Dison. Pakia Alberto, Pakia Rogelio, Padjernos, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panotes, Peña, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Puno, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramiresato, Rimulia, Revilia, Reyes, Rivera, Robes Rodriguez, Roman Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand, Romualdes Yedda Marie, Romaldo, Romulo, Roque, Sackdalan, Sagarbaria, Sakaluran, Salceda, Salimbangan, Salo Sanchez, Sangkapan. Santos Recto, Sarmiento, Saulug, Savillano, Xiao Silverio, Singson, Singson Mihan, Sin Suat, Swansing Estrelita, Swansing Horacio, Suarez Aleta, Suarez David, Sun Tay Si Alvarado. Taduran, Talliado, Tambunting, Tan Alisa, Tan Angelina, Tan Shamir, Tan Shari, Tan Shurni. Tejada, Tevez Arnulfo, Tevez Jose, Tiyango, Tolentino, Torres Gomez, Tulfo, Tupas, Chutor, Ti Alan, Ti Diego, Ummali Alfonso, Ummali Victoria. Unabia, Ungab, Ui Juliette, Ui Rolando, Valeriano, Val Mayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso, Vergara, Villa, Villa Fuerte, Villanueva Brother Eddie, Villanueva Noel, Villar, Villarasa Suarez, Villarica, Violago, Yap Eric, Yap Victor, Uzamora Ronaldo, Zamora Waykurat, Zarate, Zubiri. Second call for the above-mentioned House bills. Abaya, Abelianosa, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Agarau, Alvarez Senaro, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amatong, Omentado, Baronda, Bersaga. Biason, Biron, Brosas, Bulut, Kabatbat, Kamineru, Castro Franz, Castro Fredinil, Co Angelica, Co Wanko, Kuwa, Kulyamat, Dalipe, Duavit, Di Faustino Ina, Di Faustino Michael III, Ebkas. Erise, Espina, Espino, Fernando, Fortun, Garbin, Garin Janet, and Garin Charon, Gatchalian, Goed, Gonzaga, Gonzales Sandro, Gulyas, Herrera Dee, Halusso, Javier, Kong Hun. Lagon, Lia Tion, Lopez, Magundadato, Marcoleta, Mariano Hernandez, Marinho, Mendoza, Mercado, Nava, Nograles Jerko, Nograles Juan Fidel. Núñez Malanyaon, Uwaminal, Ong Jose, Pancho, Panotes, Pichai, Rimulia, Revilia, Romero, Romulo, Sagarbaria, Xiao Silverio, Singson, Suarez Aleta, Suarez David, Talliado, Tan Alisa, Tan Angelina, Tan Shamir, Tan Shurni, Tejada, Tevez Arnulfo, Tevez Jose, Torres Gomez, Ti Alan, Ti Diego, Ummali Alfonso, Ui Juliette, Vergara, Villa, Villa Fuerte, Villar, Villarasa Suarez, Villarica, you.
With two hundred eight affirmative votes, zero negative and zero abstention. House Bills number seventy-five-thirty-nine, seventy-five-four-one, seventy-five-four-three, seventy-five-four-four, seventy-five-four-five, seventy-five-four-seven, and seventy-five-fifty-six are hereby approved on third and final reading. The majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill seven-four-two-five under the committee report four-two-six and request the Secretary General to read the title of the bill.
Yes. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is hereby approved. The Secretary General, please.
House Bill seven-four-two-five, an act imposing VAT added tax on digital transactions in the Philippines, amending for the purpose Sections one-oh-five, one-oh-eight, one-oh-nine, one-ten, one-thirteen, one-fourteen, and one-three-six, and adding new sections, one-oh-five-A of the National Internal Revenue Code of nineteen-ninety-seven as amended.
The majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, our parliamentary status for the said bill is that it's under the period of sponsorship and debate. And may I recognize to do her sponsorship speech, the chairwoman of the Committee on Economic Affairs, Representative Sharon Garin from the Partelis Ambis Owa.
The distinguished chairperson of the Committee on Economic Affairs is hereby recognized. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Good afternoon, honorable Speaker, members of the House of Representatives, ladies and gentlemen. The ongoing boom in digital businesses through collaborative platforms and online content providers has made a significant impact to the economic growth of the Philippines. However, current laws do not fit the emerging technologies being utilized by such digital commerce. Thus, Mr. Speaker, it is through the initiative of the Committee on Ways and Means chaired by Congressman Joey Salceda that a bill imposing VAT on digital transactions was created in order to address the same. The committee, through numerous consultations with stakeholders and tax authorities, have stringently crafted a streamlined process of imposing VAT or VAT to digital transactions. Similar to Australia and the ASEAN countries, the process of remitting VAT from digital transactions can be accomplished with just a simple form and a few clicks through a digital platform. The intention is to reduce the burden for taxpayers by simplifying payment without compromising accountability. Ultimately, this measure is estimated to generate revenue from both local and foreign sources amounting to almost thirty-one billion pesos for the first year alone. This is crucial, especially with the current pandemic hurting, not only people's lives but the global economy at the moment. Every possible avenue for economic recovery must be explored. This effort should not be seen as opportunistic legislation but a reinforcement of currently existing laws. The e-commerce law has been effective as early as two thousand, but the taxing authorities have had administrative issues in the implementation of the same. This bill provides a clear-cut process on how to treat digital service providers, or DSPs, and bring within the fold of the taxing authorities those who have been doing business through online platforms. Not only does it provide regulatory power for the government in relation to digital businesses, but it also gives consumers a sense of security, given that most digital transactions are unregulated. Furthermore, the passage of this measure ensures a balanced playing field for both traditional and digital businesses resulting in healthier or healthy competition. Mr. Speaker and dear colleagues, this representation believes that the immediate passage of the bill would enhance the tax administration system of our country and encompass those entities that were otherwise outside of jurisdiction. Not only does this measure provide for additional revenue, it also seeks to evolve the tax system of our country at par with the dynamic and drastic changes brought about by technology and innovation. This has been the practice globally, and the Philippines should not be left behind. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, distinguished chairperson of the Economic Affairs. The majority floor leader.
Again, Mr. Speaker, the parliamentary status of House Bill seven-four-two-five is that it's under the period of sponsorship and debate, and, Mr. Speaker, I now move for the suspension for consideration of House Bill seven-four-two-five.
Is there any objection? There being none. Motion is approved. The majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we designate the following members to the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee on the Disagreeing Provisions of House Bill number six-seven-five-six and Senate Bill number one-five-two-zero, Establishing a Medical Scholarship and Return Service Program for Deserving Students. One, Representative Mark Go. Two, Representative Angelina Tan. Three, Representative Rufus Rodriguez. Four, Representative Anne Hofer. Five, Representative Gabriel Bordado Jr.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is hereby approved. Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the change of referral of House Bill number four-one-seven-five, creating the Boracay Island Council, from the Committee on Natural Resources to the Committees on Government Reorganization and Local Government.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. Motion is approved. The Secretary General, please take note. Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we include additional co-authors to House Bill numbers seven-five-nine-six, seven-six-one-five, seven-six-one-six, seven-six-one-eight, seven-six-four-seven, seven-six-one-one, seven-six-three-seven, seven-six-three-eight, seven-six-four-six, seven-six-four-eight, seven-six-four-nine, seven-six-five-zero, seven-six-five-one, seven-six-five-two, seven-six-five-three, seven-six-five-four, seven-six-five-five, seven-six-five-six, seven-six-five-seven, and seven-six-five-eight. And House Resolutions numbers five-two-four and one-one-nine-eight, as contained in the list to be submitted by the Committee on Rules.
Is there any objection? There being none. Motion is hereby approved. The majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to suspend session.
Session suspended. Session suspended. Session is hereby resumed. Majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that all bills approved on third reading be transmitted by our Secretariat to the Senate. So move, Mister Speaker.
Is there any objection? There being none. Motion is hereby approved.
Mister Speaker, I move that we begin consideration of House Bill Number Seven Six One Five, as contained in Committee Report Number Four Seven Three, and for this purpose, have the Secretary General read the title of said measure. So move, Mister Speaker.
Is there any objection? There being none. Motion is hereby approved, and the Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of the bill. Please proceed.
House Bill Seven Six One Five, an act granting InstaData Incorporated, a franchise to construct, install, establish, operate, and maintain telecommunications systems throughout the Philippines.
The majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we suspend consideration of House Bill Seven Six One Five. So move, Mister Speaker.
Is there any objection to the motion? There being none. Motion is hereby approved.
Mister Speaker, I move to suspend session for a few minutes.
Session suspended for a few minutes. Session resumed. The majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we resume consideration of House Bill Seven Six One Five, as found in Committee Report Number Four Seven Three. Could the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the measure?
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. Motion is hereby approved. The Secretary General, please read the title of the bill. Thank you.
House Bill Seven Six One Five, an act granting Instant Data Incorporated, a franchise to construct, install, establish, operate, and maintain telecommunications systems throughout the Philippines.
The majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, for his sponsorship of this measure, I move to recognize our esteemed colleague from the Lone District of Camiggin, the honorable XJ Romualdo. So move, Mister Speaker.
The distinguished gentleman from the Lone District of Camiggin is hereby recognized. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Mister Speaker, in lieu of the delivery of a sponsorship speech, may I request and manifest that the explanatory note of the measure be inserted into our records and considered as a sponsorship speech on the measure.
The majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that the explanatory note, as suggested by our esteemed sponsor, be entered into the records as the sponsorship speech. So move, Mister Speaker.
Is there any objection to the motion? There being none. Motion is hereby approved. The permission, with the permission of the majority floor leader, the, uh... Please proceed. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Regarding House Bill Seven Six One Five, our parliamentary status is we are in the period of sponsorship and debate. As none of our colleagues have registered to interpolate the sponsor, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate on House Bill Seven Six One Five. So move, Mister Speaker.
Is there any objection? There being none. Motion is hereby approved. Majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, as there are neither committee nor individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments on House Bill Six Seven Six One Five. So move, Mister Speaker.
Is there any objection? There being none. Motion is hereby approved.
Mister Speaker, I move for the approval on second reading of House Bill Seven Six One Five. So move, Mister Speaker.
All those who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those who are against, say nay. The ayes have it. Mister... House Bill Seven Six One Five is hereby approved on second reading. Majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, I move to begin consideration of House Bill Seven Six One Six, as contained in Committee Report Number Four Seven Four. Could the Secretary General be directed to read the title of said measure? So move, Mister Speaker.
Is there any objection? There being none. Motion is hereby approved. The Secretary General is hereby directed to please read the title of the bill.
House Bill Number Seven Six One Six, an act renewing for another twenty-five years the franchise granted to the University of the Philippines System under Republic Act Number Eight One Six Zero, to construct, establish, maintain, and operate for educational and other related purposes radio and television broadcasting stations within the University of the Philippines and in other areas within the scope of its operations.
The majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, to deliver the sponsorship for House Bill Seven Six One Six, I move for the recognition of our esteemed colleague from the Lone District of Camiggin, the honorable XJ Romualdo. So move, Mister Speaker.
The distinguished gentleman from the Lone District of Camiggin is hereby recognized.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Mister Speaker, while I am not from the University of the Philippines, rather from Ateneo, it is an honor to sponsor the measure for the University of the Philippines, and I would like to manifest that the explanatory note of the bill be inserted into our records and considered as a sponsorship speech on the measure.
The majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that the explanatory note of the bill be entered into the records as the sponsorship speech of the honorable Romualdo. So move, Mister Speaker.
Is there any objection? There being none. Motion is hereby approved. Secretary General, please take note. The majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, as none of our colleagues have registered to interpolate our sponsor, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate on House Bill Seven Six One Six. So move, Mister Speaker.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. Motion is hereby approved. Majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, there being neither individual nor committee amendments to House Bill Seven Six One Six, I move that we close the period of amendments for said measure. So move, Mister Speaker.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. Motion is hereby approved.
Mister Speaker, I move for the approval on second reading of House Bill Seven Six One Six. So move, Mister Speaker.
Those who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who are against, say nay. The ayes have it, therefore, House Bill Number... Seven Five... Seven's... House Bill Number Seven Six One Six is hereby approved on second reading. The majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we begin consideration of House Bill Number Seven Six One Eight, as contained in Committee Report Four Seven Five. Could the Secretary General be directed to read the title of said measure?
Is there any objection to the motion? There being none. Motion is hereby approved. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of the bill.
House Bill Seven Six One Eight, an act granting Christian Music Power Incorporated, a franchise to construct, establish, operate, and maintain radio broadcasting stations in the Philippines.
The majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, for his sponsorship of House Bill Seven Six One Eight, I move to recognize our esteemed colleague from the Lone District of Camiggin, the honorable XJ Romualdo. So move, Mister Speaker.
The honorable gentleman from the Lone District of Camiggin is hereby recognized.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Mister Speaker, I'd also likewise request and manifest that the explanatory note of the measure be inserted into our records and adopted as our sponsorship speech.
The majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, as requested by our esteemed sponsor, I move that the explanatory note of the measure be entered into the records as the sponsorship speech of the honorable Romualdo. So move, Mister Speaker.
Is there any objection? There being none. Motion is hereby approved. The Secretary General, please take note. The majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, there being none of our colleagues who has registered to interpolate our sponsor, I move to close the period of sponsorship and debate on House Bill Seven Six One Eight. So move, Mister Speaker.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. Motion is hereby approved. The majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, there being neither individual nor committee amendments to House Bill Seven Six One Eight, I move to close the period of amendments for said measure. So move, Mister Speaker.
Is there any objection? There being none. Motion is hereby approved.
Mister Speaker, I move for the approval on second reading of House Bill Seven Six One Eight. So move, Mister Speaker.
Those, those who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who are against, say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill Seven Six One Eight is hereby approved on second reading. The majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, the House has been informed of the presence of the family of our late colleague, the esteemed Congressman, Honorable June Datol of Partilist Senior Citizens. I move to suspend the session so that his family can approach the Speaker and be comforted by the members of the House. So move, Mister Speaker.
The session will be suspended to pave the way to honor the late distinguished colleague from the Senior Citizen Partilist, Honorable Congressman June Datol, whose wife is here with us in the person of Mrs. Norma Datol. Welcome to the House. Session suspended.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Indalila.
Alright. Session is hereby resumed. The Majority Floor Leader.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, I move for consideration the following House Bills: 7611, 7637, 7638, 7646, 7648, 7649, 7651, 7652, 7653, 7654, 7655, 7656, 7657, and 7658. And may I direct the Secretary General to read the titles of the said measures.
Is there any objection? There being none. Motion is hereby approved. The Secretary General is hereby directed to kindly read the following measures that was mentioned by the Floor Leader. Please proceed.
House Bill Number 7611, An Act Establishing a Technical Education and Skills Development Authority, Training and Assessment Center in the Municipality of Bulakan, Province of Bulakan, to be known as the Bulakan Bulakan Test Training and Assessment Center, and Appropriating Funds Therefore. House Bill Number 7637, An Act Declaring DiCaparcan Falls in Barangay Caganayan, Municipality of Tinay, Province of Abra, an Eco Tourism Site, Establishing DiCaparcan Falls Development Council and Appropriating Funds Therefore. House Bill Number 7638, An Act Declaring the Municipality of Ubay, the Province of Bohol, as the Farm Tourism Destination Capital of Bohol. House Bill Number 7646, An Act Declaring February 21 of Every Year a Special Non-Working Holiday in the Province of Marinduke to be known as Araw ng Marinduke in commemoration of its foundation anniversary. House Bill Number 7648, An Act Creating a Barangay to be known as Barangay Casitlan in the Municipality of Las Nieves, Province of Agusan del Norte. House Bill Number 7649, An Act Declaring November 7 of Every Year a Special Non-Working Holiday in the Municipality of Cuenca, Province of Batangas, to be known as Cuenca Foundation Day in commemoration of its foundation anniversary. House Bill Number 7651, An Act Declaring June 10 of Every Year a Special Non-Working Holiday in the Province of Tarlac to be known as Danding Koangko Day in commemoration of the birth anniversary of Eduardo Danding Murphy Koangko Jr. House Bill Number 7652, An Act Declaring August 11 of Every Year a Special Non-Working Holiday in the Province of Samar to be known as Samar Day in commemoration of its foundation anniversary. House Bill 7653, An Act Declaring March 19 of Every Year a Special Non-Working Holiday in the Province of Ilocosur to be known as Gabriela Silang Day in commemoration of the birth anniversary of Gabriela Silang. House Bill 7654, An Act Declaring February 28 of Every Year a Special Non-Working Holiday in the City of Tanguo, Province of Misamis Occidental, to be known as the Tanguo City Day in commemoration of its foundation anniversary. House Bill Number 7655, An Act Declaring Galston, Datum Located in Barangay Hinangayon, Municipality of Mopog, Province of Marinduke, a Tourist Park and Appropriating Funds Therefore. House Bill Number 7656, An Act Declaring the Municipality of Santa Cruz, Province of Marinduke, an Eco Tourism Zone and Appropriating Funds Therefore. House Bill Number 7657, An Act Declaring the Islas de Gijantes located in the Municipality of Carles, Province of Iloilo, an Eco Tourism Zone and Appropriating Funds Therefore. And House Bill Number 7658, An Act Declaring the Tambalisa Island located in the Municipality of Concepcion, Province of Iloilo, an Eco Tourism Zone and Appropriating Funds Therefore.
The Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider the explanatory note as the sponsorship speech of the measures.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is hereby approved. The Secretary General, please take note. The Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we terminate the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. Motion is hereby approved. The Majority Floor Leader.
There being no individual and committee amendments, I move that we terminate the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? There being none. Motion is hereby approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the approval on second reading of the following House Bills: 7611, 7637, 7638, 7646, 7648, 7649, 7651, 7652, 7653, 7654, 7655, 7656, 7657, and 7658, Mr. Speaker.
Those who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who are against, say nay. The ayes have it. House Bills 7611, 7637, 7638, 7646, 7648, 7649, 7651, 7652, 7653, 7654, 7655, 7656, 7657, and 7658 are all hereby approved on second reading. The Majority Floor Leader.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, I move for consideration of House Bill 7650 and may I request the Secretary General to please read the title of the bill.
Is there any objection to the motion? There being none. The Secretary General is hereby directed. Proceed.
House Bill 7650, An Act Declaring September 20 of Every Year a Special Non-Working Holiday in the Province of Ilocosur to be known as Josefa Ilanes Escolade Day in commemoration of her birth anniversary.
The Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we include the explanatory note as a sponsorship speech of said measure.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is approved. Majority Floor Leader.
I move that we close the period of interpolation and debate, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? There being none. Motion is hereby approved.
I move that we open the period of amendment, Mr. Speaker.
Pardon me?
I move that we open the period of amendment.
Is there any objection? There being none. Motion is hereby approved.
I move that instead, in Section 1, instead of the word Sur in Ilocosur, it has to be amended to Norte. Ilocos Norte instead of Ilocosur, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? Motion is hereby approved. The amendment is hereby accepted. Motion is approved.
And another one, the title of the bill should also be amended to read as Ilocos Norte and not Ilocosur.
Yes, it follows. Is there any objection to the motion? No objection? Motion is hereby approved.
I move that we terminate the period of individual amendments, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? There being none. Motion is approved.
I move that we terminate the period of committee amendments, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? There being none. Motion is hereby approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the approval on second reading, House Bill 7650 as amended.
The... Is there any objection to the motion? There being none. The Secretary General is hereby... Oh, um... All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who are against, say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill Number 7650 as amended is hereby approved on second reading. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, earlier, we approved the change of referral of House Bill Number 4175, creating the Boracay Island Council from the Committee on Natural Resources to the Committees on Government Reorganization and Local Government. I move that we consider the said change of referral. Mr. Speaker, I now move for the change of referral of House Bill Number 4175, creating the Boracay Island Council from the Committee on Natural Resources to the Committees on Government Enterprises and Privatization and Local Government. So moved, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is hereby approved. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to adjourn session until September 21 at 3:00 p.m.
Motion is hereby adjourned until September 21st at 3:00 o'clock p.m.
One. Okay. Bilang pa ako eh. Ang dami pala na ito. Asan ay ako ng bumibigay. Okay. Ayun.
Thank you. Hindi, na ba ako. Team leader, team leader, team! Speaker, speaker. Thank you.
Gaganda naman ang ano mo. O, tama. And then, where did you get them?
Wow, you should send me the number where you got them.
Tapos maganda't biggy exercise. Doon?
Hindi, when you're...
Ah, yes.
O, pwede rin. With you guys.
Kung kasama ka rin, po, meron additional to ano din. Oy, the best. Galing na niya, tabak.
Solo. Talagang ubale. Hindi makabali. Solo, solo, solo.
Ingat, sugar.
Thank you.